We're gonna get started. Like to call the Richmond City Council meeting, order October 6, 2021. Everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everybody tonight. Our first item up is our open public forum. Anybody not on the agenda wishing to address the council, this will be your time. Seeing nobody here, we'll move on to item number three, approval of the agenda with the one addition in yellow on our consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approval of meeting minutes from September 1st, September 23rd, and September 28th, 2021. Any questions or comments or corrections? If hearing done, I look for a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approval of bills paid? Anybody find anything in there interesting? Pat?
I just a question. Seems like we're buying a lot of siren batteries year after year for some reason.
Siren?
Siren for weather and emergency sirens. And why are we, this one here is $1,000 for Ryan Electric, check number 21285. And on the flip page, frontline plus communications for siren battery.
That was for.
Why isn't it going through the same place?
That was a charger for the one. The other one was the actual replacement, but that's who would get us the materials and do the work. Eric went out to three different companies and this is what he had gotten.
So Ryan Electric could not get the charger?
Must not have been able to.
Or couldn't frontline get the batteries? You know what I'm saying? I hate to have companies all over here piecemealing everything together. So the other question is check number 21307, Jack's Oil, $719.
Waste water treatment plant. That's the waste water treatment plant.
Waste water treatment?
For the generator.
So that's diesel?
Yep.
That would be about 150 gallons of diesel. Does it run that much?
Um, it was getting low. We don't get it very often.
So.
And then we also do try to keep the fuel or diesel good. We'll start to take some out there to use elsewhere and then fill it back up. So that way it doesn't sit for five, 10 years of nothing. We just doing tests on it or running here and there isn't enough to burn that up fast.
No, that's what I'm saying. It's a lot of diesel you use up.
Right.
But whatever whoever takes it, whatever division should be charged for that later on.
Mm-hmm.
This that should be dispersed.
Yep.
That's just, that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions on the bills?
If not.
If not, I look for a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda for this evening, resolution 185-21, approval of September 2021 journal entries. Item B is resolution 186-21, approval of September donations and contributions, which were 1350 by the American Legion, $190 from the Richmond Lions Club, and a $70,000 Richmond Business Park donation for park dedication. And then.
Should that be considered a donation or contribution?
Donation/contribution. So that's why this resolution is a donation slash contribution, approving both.
Because I believe it states in our agreement plus in the ordinance that they would have to make a contribution.
Yep.
Item C is resolution 187-21, approval of seasonal workers for the River Lake Civic Arena Ice Sea. Item D is resolution 188-21, approval of satisfaction of repayment agreement for 56 Main Street West. And item E is acknowledgement of people services, September 2021 written report. We have those five items in front of you.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. At this time, we'll skip the next item. We'll move on to item eight. Excuse me. Richmond Business Park, Dave Blum.
Good evening. Finally building things out there, so now it's time to pay the contractor. I can tell you guys that the pipe work will be finished tomorrow out there. All the pipe will be in the ground as of tomorrow. Possibility of curb middle of next week already. And pavement Monday, Tuesday thereafter. So we are very rapidly approaching a completed project out there. Things have gone very well. Contractor's been fantastic to work with. They've been doing really, really good work. I have no complaints, honestly. It's gone exceedingly well here. So I've been meeting weekly with staff and them.
One clarification, that is only going from Main Street all the way to the end with nothing else starting off from, other than stubs for future.
Yep, stubs for future connection into the existing system, tie-in spots for private locations and that kind of things. But yeah, everything else is in. Shouldn't be any future excavation underneath the road like we planned for. Everything's stubbed out for future expansion for the city. So I think we are looking very good. A few little hiccups with, you know, pieces of material where they couldn't get one fitting because it just isn't available. We've had a lot of that going on right now, but we've been able to make everything work really honestly with no additional costs. So it's been really good. So before you guys tonight, I have a payout application, payout application number one for the contractor. This is a lot of the mobilization. This is the, some of the traffic control they've done, about half of the sewer and water. No storm sewer on this one yet. I expect actually to run that through probably by your next meeting here. So total amount requested this evening, $307,543.31. That includes 5% retainage as always, so that contractor does their final paperwork and all that stuff. And we hang back on that 5% of the contract until such time that it makes sense to release it. So unless there's questions, as I said, I think I am not concerned about this whatsoever.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
How does the city wish to act on a payout application number one?
I think we need to make a motion to approve to keep it moving forward.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Or clarifications? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carried.
Thank you very much.
I got one other question for you. This weekend when I went around with the calendars for the fire department, a lot of people were asking why we're not doing the project in town. And I was clarifying that, you know, because the USDA has not done our program yet, so we don't know what money we're gonna get. And, you know, just obviously we're coming in October and it's not.
Absolutely. Yeah, and this is actually a good venue to update that. I appreciate you bringing that up, Jim. So yeah, obviously this year is not going to be in the cards for that project. Our funding, they have recently told us they committed to funding this fiscal year, which started a couple of weeks ago here, or a couple of days ago, actually, October 1. Yeah, so the federal fiscal year started October 1, so they are committed to funding us this year. And so Tessa and I will get them updated numbers and we'll get our full funding package here in the next month or two, I would imagine, from USDA. So plans are pretty much ready to go. It's a matter of getting everything in front of them so they can approve it all and then see where we stand.
And then the street overlay, that was gonna be part of this project or not?
The.
Like the.
Seal coating?
Yeah, the seal coating.
Yeah, you know, so at one point we were talking, we were weighing the options of that, the seal coating, whether we do it as maintenance activity or whether we put it with the project. And I think the council consensus at the time was even though it's not really a project cost, that to decrease the amount and number of times the public's inconvenience and make it look like, you know, that it's one big, one big inconvenience, one big project, that there was some merit in tying the two together. Now, that's something that can always be undone. We could always decide to go separately with it. Like I said, they're kind of dissimilar activities, but at the same time, there is a logical explanation why we tie them together too. So six of one, half a dozen of the other, quite honestly.
There's more cost savings though by putting them together, correct?
No, I don't think so. I think it's probably a wash either way. The biggest thing would be the inconvenience to the residents. It's whether you do it all at once where it's gonna be one big mess or it's, you know, you separate it out. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions for Dave? Then we'll move on. Yeah, then we'll move on to number nine, the 126 Barry Loop request from Bob and Nita Halfley to, virtually they're asking to have a public hearing because in order for us and before we have to approve to have a public hearing on this changes if we're gonna allow it.
And I went over there tonight. I walked their lot and I walked some of the other lots that are similar to it and it's, they're all pretty, the house next to it has already been granted the five feet closer, just like what they're asking for. So really, when you, well, if you go walk in between there and you go where the lots are, they're, where they got it marked out where the property line is, where it was surveyed, and their property line, that's, they're like really.
It's absolutely tight through there. Yeah. So what we have there, to give you guys a little rundown, we have a 20-foot easement, 10 feet on either side of the property line for a water main that runs back there to serve future development. Honestly, to the south is the main push for that. The request is to reduce that from 20-foot easement to an overall 16-foot easement. Like you said, it's tight anyway. 16, I wrote you guys a memo and looked for the previous meeting here, but not to reiterate entirely, but, so the 16 feet is something that's gonna be tight. If there was a leak at the narrowest point there, can we fix it? And 16 feet, 20 feet, either way, yes, we can fix it. Try to get a back truck in there, suck out the soil so it's a vertical trench, which we can't do very well in this town with an open trench. And I think that's probably the fix either way. So the impact of the water main, I think, is relatively negligible. I think we can still get in there, but it's definitely a, it's a little bit of concession on our part. Build another house in town isn't worth it. I can't argue one way or the other, but.
But that water main could be eliminated and bring the hydrant back to the front of the property where it'd actually do some usage versus in the back. It's gonna be virtually unusable unless you develop the property next to it.
So the purpose of that hydrant back there is just so we don't have a dent in line? That hydrant was never intended to cover. It's a temporary hydrant where we make a connection to the south. So at the time that was plotted, there was active discussion or saying, you know, hey, there is some interest in moving to the south here with water. And that was the way of getting a loop in the system. So, so that's why it's stubbed there. There's no intention of using that. Obviously, if there's a fire and you can make it work, fantastic, but the hydrants were spaced that we weren't relying on that one.
But on the other, on the other hand, we do have an access to any future, if we're looking into the future at all, of looping all the systems and keeping it up to what we've been, our goal is to.
Absolutely.
Everything loop.
Yep.
So eliminating was, would be kind of not in the best interest of the city.
No. Yeah, yeah, like, you know, if it came, if it came right down to it and there was a problem with the line, yes, you could turn it off and shut it out, shut it down with no impact to anybody right now. But we do want to keep that in place for future development, unless there's a reason not to. But like if that lot were to, you know, sell and develop in some other method, method that, you know, some other means. But yeah, that was the idea. It was forethought for the future.
I also want that property today. And according to this drawing and what's out there is a little deceiving, I believe. Has that, has lot one and two there been reconfigured somewhere along the line? Because the solid line that's coming right through there is with easements on both sides of that or utility easements on both sides of that, does that exist?
In 2019, this curve was redone. And so there used to be three lots in there. And they took and made lots one and two to make a little bit bigger, more appealing on the curve there. And those easements in between there shut and vacated, yes. Because if you look real close where the center line is and the dotted line is in the middle of one, underneath it says easement vacated. And then there should be, if you look at what was recorded with the Stearns County Recorder's Office, should have a document number vacating that easement. And then there should be the same thing on the northern part of number two. Underneath it says easement vacated per document number. So that was done through planning commission back in 2019, I believe.
I was reading that as, since there was no number there, that that was potentially.
No.
Be looked at tonight.
Nope. Nope, that's already done.
So the.
Which also with lot six, the one that we're talking about, shows one for the western side. That was vacated also at the same time of doing all of this. That's why I had a zoom in of this area because this is the same document that we used when we did the public hearing in 2019.
But for tonight's purposes, more or less, are we willing to set a public hearing to allow them to move forward if, if the public hearing turns out their way? Because obviously the neighbors still have the right to come in and, you know, if they have a complaint, they have a right to complain if they don't want it to be that tight.
And there's two things that we technically need to do with this property because Dave and I had talked, there's a 30-foot drainage easement in the backyard that is not needed.
Yeah, that 30-foot drainage easement, when this was originally developed as all single-family townhouse style lots here, before Cherrywood bought a good portion of it, there was a big stormwater pond back there. Well, since Cherrywood redid their stormwater associated with their lot, that took the need for that larger, and pond is even the wrong term. It's just a depression back there. It was supposed to slow water down. So that southern 30-foot easement is no longer necessary.
So in the event that we move forward with this, we would be doing a public hearing to vacate that easement and then whatever you guys decide for the eastern side.
Any other discussion from council? How's the council wish to act?
Well, I believe that it can be done. It can be serviced and keeping the line in place with all usable activity.
Yes.
I don't have any problem with granting a public hearing and finding what the neighbors say, you know.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
So have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Carried. While I was visiting out there, one of the neighbors got the attention to our new hire from People Services about a hydrant that has been.
They fixed it today.
Did they fix it today? They said, she said it was a month and he said, well, he's only been hired three weeks, so didn't know anything about it. But it was just an adapter that should have been screwed off and a cap put back on, but.
She said it came off today.
So whatever, why it was missed, I don't know. It was only about a five-second fix.
Anybody have any other questions for Dave? Any other things going on?
Do you want Jim to sign the pay requests?
Yeah, go ahead and just send it to me electronically. It's fine.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
At this time, I'll move on to the police department report for the evening. Jason Blum.
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. Just start out with some of the monthly reports for first July in Richmond. We had 108 total incidents, five medicals, nine suspicious activities, 28, or 28 traffic stops with six citations and then 66 miscellaneous calls for service. For the month of August, we had 73 total incidents, eight medicals, three suspicious activities, 13 traffic stops with eight citations, and then 66 miscellaneous calls for service. Any questions on those reports? Otherwise, currently, we are, the PD has approved for another full-time position to start after the first of the year. We'd like to put together a hiring committee to start that process now. So by the first of the year, we have a selection and hopefully somebody ready to start shortly after that. With that being said, we also have, currently have two part-time positions open, which are all posted right now. The posting is open through the 29th of this month. Would like to get the committee together probably mid to late November, work around hunting, because I know there's probably a lot of hunters that would be on that, or possibly be on that committee. But so we're, I'm aware that we'd have to work around that. So it'd be mid to late November to get together and set up interviews and then go through that process. That would give us time to do a background and hire by the first of the year. Part-time, yeah, depending on what the selection is, we opened the part-time up earlier this summer. We got four applications. Looking at the post board, which is the, our governing, they hold our licensing. That's where we do a lot of our postings. I've never seen so many full-time positions open at any given time, so it's hard to get part timers. So I'm hoping with a full-time position, we can get a larger pool to choose from, to go through a selection process and get some people hired. So just looking for somebody to be on that committee. I know it's, it's always, in the past, it's usually been the city administrator from each city and then one member of the council from each city to be on that committee. We norm, the last interviews we did, we did mid-Morning, I believe it was. So just wondering if we can get one of you on that committee.
This full-time position, is that in filling an empty full-time or a new one?
So there's been some back and forth. Cold Spring approved for an 11th position because we can't get any part-time people to fill in the open spots right now.
Hopefully this new full-time will take care of a couple empties.
So normally we always ran with four part-time positions, so we're dropping that down to two part-time positions and then adding a full-time to hopefully offset. And we'll see if we can keep those part-time positions filled.
How does that work with the budget? Are we gonna be seeing an increase with our contract in the next year or two? Or since they'll have more people or staff, the overhead has to be higher because there's more benefits.
Yep. So I'm assuming there'll be a discussion, but as of right now, there won't be any change to it. When those discussions come up, it'll be a negotiation at that time.
Right now, we're still within our agreements.
Right.
But I'm just looking forward.
I forget if we're in the third year of the last contract.
I think we're gonna be talking about it sooner.
Anything else?
That's all I have. So as long as I can get one of, if there's any volunteers at this point or if you wanna.
Any of them available out here?
Perfect. So I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Pat to the committee?
Sure, I'll make that motion to appoint Pat to the committee.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Let them know when you need them.
Yep, and I'll get, I'll be in touch probably towards the end of this month to let you know kind of available dates and we'll hopefully get something figured out for the entire group. I know it's Councilman Ramler from Cold Spring and then the administrator over there, Bridget. So and then we'll work something out. You guys have any other questions for me? Alright, thank you.
Move on to parks and arena.
Me and the council, mayor, distinguished guests. Start off with the arena stuff. We have had a ton of activity down there in the last three weeks. The new board installation has been super challenging. We originally had scheduled September 13th for installation to start. They had to push us back, supply chain issues. So we started on September 30th. One of the problems that we had was the, the materials showed up in multiple deliveries. So got a little spooky on that one. The actual board ring itself and the majority of the glass and the scoreboards were completed and installed on the fourth. So if we got the material on the 20th and the majority of it was done on the 24th, it was a busy four days. And then one day later on the 25th, we froze water onto the ground one day later and then painted the ice two days after that was done. We still had work to do. They weren't completed. But everything in the side of the rink area where we could put, do ice was completed. They had to finish the scoreboards, or not scoreboards, they had to finish the scorers' table, the penalty boxes, and then we still had 40 sheets of glass that hadn't arrived yet. So that was completed on the 30th. And then, so right now we have new boards, glass, players' benches, scorers' area, penalty boxes and scoreboards. It's really pretty cool. Scoreboards are awesome. They're wireless, basically Bluetooth. So yeah, as long as you got power, you can do the scoreboards from anywhere inside the building, which is pretty nice. And then we also had some electrical work done. We had to, we had to bring power to the, to the east scoreboard. So at the same time, we had electoral installers move power to the south side of the building. There was a single outlet on the entire south side of the building from the, from original. So we had more outlets put to the south side of the building and it's very handy right now. The ice installation has been an absolute challenge. Mid 80s humidity, not a good situation. At the time that I wrote this, we were hoping to hit our date on, for that Rusty Blades tournament. We did not accomplish that. We just couldn't get it done. I couldn't get water to freeze fast enough to make it happen. So the tournament went on. We did help them get ice at the MAC and in St. Cloud and at Sartell Burnix Arena. They totally understood. They got it. They get it. They understand it. They're all got. They totally understood, they got it, they get it, they understand it, they're old guys, they know what it's all about. They're excited to come back next year. They rent like 10 cabins down on the lake and they do a social on Saturday night. It's really nice for the economy of the area, having these guys come in for a weekend, and they're, they already booked their cabins for next year, so. We just couldn't get it done. I was very, very disappointed, but it is what it is. Moving ahead, ice schedule is complete for the fall portion of the season. Youth hockey and figure skating are actively on ice right now as we speak, to tell you the truth. And throughout the season, we have five tournaments scheduled, and the game scheduling is this weekend. It's, I don't know if you've ever been to game scheduling or anything like that, it's two full days of sitting down with 12 other associations and trying to figure out how you can get each team a home and away game. It's, it's quite the fiasco, but it gets accomplished. And that's this upcoming weekend. As of right now, we're, we're operating with the staff we had from last year, and you guys approved them. One young man was moved from the concessions stand, and this isn't unusual, you do it all the time. He moved from the concessions stand back to Zamboni Driving, so he's training right now down there on how to do that. We did lose two people, one in concessions and then one out of the Zamboni staff, so we're actively looking for, to fill those areas. So we've had some talk about the exterior steel on the building, and I am meeting with contractors to start the pricing on the exterior improvements to the arena. We'll, I'll be bringing back some numbers, just kind of where we're at, how much, how much we're actually talking about, and, and see if we can't get some movement going in that way. Moving on to parks, we're still waiting on the arrival of, the playground equipment was shipped today. I got an email from Pennsylvania, it's on its way. So it looks like early next week it'll get here, and then we, at the same time, we have, we're ordering the mulch, and the rubber mulch, it won't be available to us until, in where they make the rubber mulch at, October 28th is when the mulch is available, but that means they have to get it here and deliver it, so it looks like a lot of this project is going to be done in November. They don't, they're not going to want to start the installation of the playground until the mulch arrives, because once you put the playground up, kids go play. And if there's no mulch for a safety factor, you know, they don't want that, so. I'm probably thinking around November 10th, kind of. So we'll see what happens. As soon as everything arrives, PlaySCAPE has said that they will get a crew up here to, to get us in. The things that we have then up there, if you bend past the corner, we did install the privacy fencing and the hole is excavated, and we're going to have to go do more work to it because we excavated it six weeks ago. You know, so we're also waiting on the concrete contractor, the cement guys for the sidewalk, and something's going to happen up there. At some point, somebody's going to wind up there and we're going to get some work done. I'm still really hopeful it's done this, this fall. The soccer season, just the fall soccer season, we were kind of surprised, I didn't think they were going to do a fall soccer season, but they did, and they finished up on, not the second, they finished up on the third, the second wound up being a rain day, around Ikki Saturday was, so they finished up on Sunday. So the park's going to get pretty, a lot less activity, and we'll winterize that at the end of the month, and we do plan on doing one more full cutting of the city properties before the end of the fall, so. So I was looking back at my old reports, and at that time, I don't think pickleball had received all their, had received that big grant from the DNR. Well, they have received that grant, and I was just talking to Dave when he walked out, that we're going to try to stay on top of that project as we're moving forward, so we're going to have some pickleball court stuff happening this winter, you know, bidding processes and, you know, and all that. Because the money's in place as it stands right now, and then all those other improvements out at the park, because we had to do a lot of stuff to become ADA compliant out there, so there can be a lot of activity, a lot of construction and a lot of improvements out at Centennial Park next spring and summer to get, to get that up where it's going. Another thing that, that's been, we, so we had a pretty dry year, but we get these big rains, and at some point, we're going to have to figure out something to do with the main walking trail at Nature Park, because after every two-inch rain, we're going in with gravel and we're filling in the washouts, so I might be coming to you guys with an idea on what to do with that, because, and when I'm saying it's washing out, I mean it's washing out a foot deep. And then to the, to the north, northeast side of the park, there's been the development up there, you know, of Rich River Estates, and where a lot of those, it used to just be wooded area up there, so as you're walking down the hill, it'd be on your right. That's all opened up and they're backyards now, and water's just running out of those backyards into the park and washing out our trail, so we're going to have to try to come up with some type of a plan there, so. I mean, I don't mind the maintenance, but, you know, if you don't get there right away, I'd hate to see somebody running through there and falling one of those big holes, so. I don't know if that means Batuminis coming off the trail or not, or coming off the parking lot, running down to, to the river or whatever, but it's probably our solution, but we'll work on that. So moving on to trails, we're gearing up for construction for phase three. The design and paperwork is completed, permitting right now, and wetland mitigation and buying credits and things like that are what's important to us right now, especially the buying of wetland credits, because we are going to be disturbing a portion of the, we're not going to be disturbing it, but we're going to be, be impacting slightly the South River running through there, so we have to, we have to buy some, some credits, and apparently it's pretty expensive, but it's okay, it's all been worked into the price, but it's kind of our stumbling block right now. We did finalize the fiscal agreement agent, the fiscal agreement, fiscal agent agreement with Stearns County a couple of weeks ago, so that's all done, so they will be channeling our funds through the county, so basically we give them, the county the bills, and then the county pays it out of the funds that they receive. We're really close, bidding should happen over the winter, and we should start, start the groundwork early in 2022. Our next meeting is tomorrow morning at 9:00 in Rockville for that. Oh yeah, Cold Spring, don't go to Rockville, we are in Cold Spring this time, so. As it stands right now, that's all I have. Any questions, comments?
I think it'd be a nice idea, Kevin, maybe either this month's workshop or our next televised meeting, and after the meeting, I think we take a little tour of the arena and see all the new improvements and all the things that have been done.
That looks really sharp.
All the council members.
That looks really sharp.
So I think we should be look at doing something like that.
Sure.
And put that on the agenda or whatever, let's just after the meeting, go over there and you can give us the nickel tour.
Yeah, that's about all you're going to get.
Alright, perfect.
Yeah, no, that'd be great.
Yeah, love to see it.
Any other concerns? Yeah.
Your ice hockey time and all the stuff that you have lined up now for this year, is that pretty much back like it was a couple of years ago?
As it stands right now, the, the only one that I'm not sure of, they canceled the program, they canceled their season last year with St. John's Intermural League. I'm hoping that it comes back. I mean, you know, something disappears for a year, who knows? I've made calls with Bob and helpers over there at St. John's and, you know, he's telling me that they're going to, so hopefully they do.
Otherwise, you're pretty much back to where you were.
Yeah, youth hockey, neither one of the main tenants, the River Lakes Youth Hockey, River Lakes Figure Skating, had any dip in their participation. I mean, they actually stayed pretty strong through all of this, so, you know, they want more, you know, we give them all that we, that we're able to give them. Yeah, no, pretty strong. Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions, Kevin?
Thanks, guys. Have a nice night.
No, thanks, Kevin.
The fire department report for tonight, we had 10 medicals and one good intent. The grant for FEMA, there's nothing to report on. Training for September was behind the hall, there was a customized fire training trailer for confined space and confidence trailer. And we sent our guys through to test their confidence and their skill as well as, was very educational. Trucks, everything's fine, Pumper One tested out and was recertified for service. We got five new sets of turnout gear is on order, and in the near future, is looking to replace five more pagers in the next couple of months. Obviously, Saturday, we handed off the calendars to everybody in town here. On Sunday, we had our Goodwill breakfast, which was well-attended, and Monday, they went to the schools to do Fire Prevention Week, and I guess that turned out fairly well. And we are still looking to hire more, more firemen for the future. That's from Jesse Coleman.
Firefighters.
Firefighters, sorry. I don't know any, unless you've got questions that need a check or I can help with the fire department stuff. Otherwise, we're going to move on to public works. Gordy put his letter in here, sewer water and storm shouldn't be cleared this week. Business Mark and pressure tested and passed, and the next step is sanitizing and flushing. They are flushing fire hydrants this week from the eighth, fourth to the eighth, and doing their annual inspection. During inspection, we look for any damage in the fire hydrants that are hard to turn. Fall cleanup has started, this involves sweeping streets and cleaning the storm drains, it's generally a long and slow process, getting leaves, keep falling. The new front on the storage shed, I believe that's at the, at the baseball park, correct?
Long behind the public workshop.
And the front of the storage shed behind the public works has been replaced, next steel will be replaced on the sides for additional protection. I'm not sure what that one means. And then emergency management from Eric Kinning.
Question, Mr. Mayor, in the public works, please. How many loads of water did we sell for the 71th project?
I don't know off the top of my head, Stacy does all the billing for that. People Service has it out there, but I know a tie.
People were asking me, why are we selling that if we had to have a restriction on our own water?
I understand that, but...
And it kind of made sense, you know?
We double-checked with DNR before we moved forward with it, wanted to put the restriction on, and because that is a construction project, they are considered, considered essential.
That didn't bother the residents, thought that they would be priority over economy thing, and I understand that, you know, and they should, they have paid for the water system. So I was just wondering how much that would be, if you could just...
And we can calculate it up on...
Put roughly how many loads in there, send us an email, I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Emergency management report from Eric Kinning. EMS continues to monitor the federal, state, and county updates and protocols, and have been working closely with the fire chief to update response protocol for fire and rescue dealing with COVID-19. Sirens, no new repairs or maintenance noted. You didn't put new batteries in, obviously.
Besides batteries.
That was prior, that was a couple of months ago when you put that in there where they were updated.
Emergency Management Services working on conjunction with the fire department to remove the DNR truck out of service and start the process to return it to DNR. There's been very little use and was determined the maintenance and the liability costs were not validated. Storms and events, severe thunderstorm warning was issued on 9/16/21. EMS monitored storms and Stearns County Emergency Management from the fire hall, no reported, reportable conditions noted, no weather spotters activated. Came from Eric Kinning, our EMS director.
Did our 1:00 sirens work today okay? Okay, just asking.
So with that said, we'll move on to council reports for this evening, we'll start with the EDA, Mike and Emily.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a meeting on the 21st, which was Tuesday here at City Hall. We continually talk and discuss a little bit about the, about the open, open businesses and open properties that we have available still in downtown Richmond. We did have a lengthy discussion a little bit with the Gilk property, what we're going to be looking at maybe doing with that. Some of the suggestions are kind of thrown out of, you know, a parking area to a few multiple other things that we discussed. Tracy Ryan was updating us a little bit on the branding that we've been working with currently right now, this is some branding, logos that the city is looking at going to be implementing throughout. So far, I think there has been, the discussion's been to three logos, I think they have picked out currently right now, maybe Emily can kind of talk on that one a little bit more, because she's been involved with that committee portion of that. We do have a few people that are interested in, in doing our enhancement program, you know, the money that's available, New Adventures, looking at doing some improvements to their building, their outside maintenance, they look at doing the painting. Clive's right next to them is also looking at doing some improvements to the outside of their building, again too, that's I think some painting that they want to do, and then we have another business that's looking at coming into town where the old barber shop was too, so. Do you want to highlight a little bit more on the logo and the branding, because you've been on the committee?
Sure, so we have it narrowed down to two right now, and we're just kind of waiting for the, the committee to, to pick one.
So in other words, you're going ahead with this branding thing?
We are going ahead with it, yep, yep.
Yeah, we've been moving forward and going ahead with it. We spent the money to be able to do that because we're going to try to incorporate it where everything now that is a logo will be the logo that the city of Richmond will be using. Obviously, once, once things decided, we're going to bring it back to the city council also too, for their, looking at it and their approval also. So, yeah, that's the reason why we've, we spent the money on having a marketing person look into this, what's going to be best to continually bring people and businesses into the city of Richmond. So those are really our discussions that we pretty much had. We do have another meeting coming up here on the 19th of October, 3:30 here at City Hall.
The one, the one business you were talking about is Late Life Sports, which is next to New Adventures.
Oh, that, okay, alright, okay.
And then my question to you is this branding, are you like a month or two away, or you're six months away from bringing it back to the council? I'm just kind of a curiosity.
So once the, once the logo is picked, so we've spent the last couple of months going through and reworking the logo designs, and now we should be at the final stage of actually picking one, and once we've picked the one, then it will come back to council.
I'm just kind of, so we kind of, maybe we've been hearing about it, but...
Right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it's, you know, they, they originally, so we've got, oh, at a, at a meeting, there's probably eight, 10 of us that show up, depending on the meeting, and they originally started with six or seven, so it's been, it's been a lot of just redesign and getting it to where it wa, to where it is and where it's going to work for the city on whether it's, just, you know, like logo, like on a truck, on a t-shirt, on a billboard, on pamphlets, on whatever, you put it on, so it's not too busy, but it represents us, I think the current, there, the two current like slogans is 80 miles of shore and so much more, or like, like local.
So, just a question looking forward is, once they determine what logo you're going to use or branding, is that something that's going to be available for anybody that wants the, let's say you come up with a certain design that this is your logo, is that logo going to be available to any bar, any, any business in town that wants to use a logo with, with their own personal logo of their business?
No, it's meant for the city.
It's meant for branding for the city itself.
Yeah, the city itself.
But I can't see if permission can be discussed and granted, I mean, once...
It's supposed to make the city itself stand out.
Right.
When you see that, you're gonna say, that's the city of Richmond, or if we tie it in with River Lake Days because it's a part of the city, it's supposed to, well, it's, it's a festivity that is in the city, you're right, that is not part of the city. It's a festivity in the city that helps promote the community and bring people to town, so, but it is meant to just be like, that's the city of Richmond, not be, that is this business or that business, or, you know, whatever, Dollar General has their colors and their little logo, and so obviously, this would be for us.
And let me comment a little bit, too, not on the branding, but we also have heard that there is some definite interest, pardon me, on a few of the vacant buildings that are in downtown Richmond, that people have been looking at and pursuing a possibility of taking those vacant and, and putting them to good use. So, but we don't know a lot of the details quite yet on all of that, but there has just been some things that have been in the works right now. So, it's one of our goals, obviously, as the EDA, economic development for the city, and one of the big ones is try to fill those empty spaces in downtown Richmond, it's been our goal since we started, so, that's all I have for tonight.
Anybody have any questions for him?
If not, Plan Commission, we, we have not had a meeting, so our next meeting will be October twenty-eighth at six-thirty if necessary, and obviously, Recorri Trail is tomorrow morning at Cold Spring at nine o'clock, I believe. And our next council meeting will be October twenty-first here at City Hall at six-thirty. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the city? If not, means you're done.